Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM. This is the August 13th meeting of the Sandwich School Committee. Back at it again for the new school year. We'll begin the meeting, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder, members of the public may listen and watch this meeting live on www.sandwichtv.org. I always get tongue-tied saying that. Also on Sandwich Community Television Education Channel Number Eight, and it is also being audio-recorded by the Sandwich Enterprise. Our first item on the agenda is our first public forum of the evening. Just because we're kind of starting a new year, I'll just go over a quick, I won't read everything from our policy, but a quick review of public comment. We certainly want to hear from the public, and that's why we have not just one, but two public comments. That said, public comment is not a discussion or debate or dialogue between the committee. If it's not formally on the agenda, we cannot engage in a dialogue on it. That's not us trying to be difficult, that's just open meeting law. But anyone is invited to come forward and express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. To ensure ability to do that, we don't have a huge crowd here, so I don't speak too long. We normally will keep it in total to about 15 minutes unless it can be extended by the discretion chair. Each individual speaker has up to five minutes. That's aligned with the, our policy reads three, but we did a vote, if you remember last spring, to amend it to five, so we align with the Board of Selectment. So with that, would anybody like to come forward to speak a couple of public comment? One thing I did not mention, I think you already did it, but anybody who is going to speak, please sign in with Lisa there. We just need your name and address, and begin with your name and address. Thank you. Alexis, just make sure their green light's on, I appreciate it.
Before I begin my public comment, I'd like to ask for two accommodations. Is that okay, Kevin? Can someone send Kelly an accessible form of the agenda? The agenda as posted now on the town website is not accessible. And then we would ask that going forward, that all the agendas that are posted on the town's agenda page be made fully accessible. The second, will you be able to do that?
I'll have to talk to the town clerk, they manage that, but we will certainly make every effort to do so.
Thank you. And I'll just, if you, I timed myself, I thought it was three minutes, but I would ask accommodation for myself not to be interrupted because it's hard for me because I get distracted. Is that okay? Can you accommodate?
It's your time, we will not interrupt.
Perfect. Good evening. My name is Meg Keegan, and I live at 13 Joe J. Lane. I'm here tonight to publicly express my concern about the town's ongoing inability to make our schools district and towns communications fully digitally accessible for parents, residents, and the public. For over two years, or over two years ago, this concern was brought to the town and the superintendent and the school committee. Excuse me, one second. Yet it remains unresolved. Because no action was taken to assure access, there was no other choice but to file a complaint with the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights requesting a formal investigation into Sandwich Public Schools regarding communications for people with disabilities and our right to full, unfettered access to all communications. The U.S. Department of Education has now opened a formal investigation. This will require the town and the school department to commit staff time, hire legal counsel, and likely bring outside experts in to audit and fix accessibility issues. Because this was not addressed over the last two years, these steps have now created an unnecessary and avoidable financial burden on the taxpayers. And this all could have been mitigated. Approximately 20% of our population self-identifies as living with a disability, yet only about 5% have a visible disability. I would ask you to look around here and consider how many people here tonight have a disability? How many of your coworkers? How many of your friends? The truth is, you will never know, because there is no requirement to disclose. There is, however, state and federal requirements under the ADA for public entities to provide full access to all residents in all forms of communication, including accessible emails, meeting agendas, the schools and towns' social media pages, websites, apps, and any other electronic transfer of information. And regardless of what percentage of residents with disabilities, you are responsible for providing access to 100% of them. I'm asking you again to work with Kelly and me, our town, the school district, and make all electronic communication fully accessible and inclusive. Starting now could save taxpayer dollars and make Sandwich a community that turns inclusivity into reality for everyone, from the youngest to the oldest. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak a public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Leslie Dominguez Santos, and I live at 35 Moody Drive. And I'm the proud mother of three, two of which have attended Sandwich Schools. And so all I was going to say, as a Sandwich mom, I have no prepared remarks at all. But I rely a lot on the communications from the schools because my children are not very communicative. And so unless I go digging in my children's backpacks, I'm not going to see a letter that comes home. And I also really enjoy the photographs that get shared by teachers, by the superintendent. I love them. I actually meant to stand up here and start off my comments with a photograph of me would include a medium-height white woman with glorious silver hair in a flowered shirt speaking in a microphone. That is the sort of thing that doesn't exist right now in a lot of the communication that's coming from the schools. And I know for me, if I see my kid in a photograph, I'm going to ask them about it. But if there's no caption that can be read by a digital reading device, I'm going to miss that my kid won an award that he didn't tell me about. Or I'm going to miss that my kid was in his chem lab doing some cool exhibit, which then allows me to have dinner conversation, like, hey, I saw you in the chem lab, what were you doing? So some of this stuff, digital access for information, is complicated and hard, and I get that. But some of it is pretty straightforward, and so I would really love to see an immediate solution for a parent that's been asking for support, and then an in-depth solution to ensure that everybody has equal access to everything. So digital readers can't read charts. So when a teacher sends a supply list that's in a grid format, it can't be understood by the technology. So again, some of it is maybe someone from the school could pick up the phone and say, hey, this is the notice that went out this week. Some of it is put captions on photographs. And then some of it is, yes, do the harder work so that this problem is resolved, maybe not just for the school district, but for the town. Everything needs to be accessible. And as a parent, I rely on information from the schools, and other parents should be able to have the same access that I have because I am able to read it and see it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if you didn't already sign in, please do so. Would anybody else like to speak a public forum? Seeing none, I'll close the public forum. Next up is donations, Sandwich Garden Club to Sandwich Public Schools at Forestale.
A donation of $500 from the Sandwich Garden Club. We will be commencing, actually, work has already commenced, in a comprehensive garden project at the Forestale School, where there'll be approximately 30 raised beds, one for each of classrooms. This donation from the Sandwich Garden Club of $500 is to buy appropriately-sized gardening implements for students ages four through eight.
Gardening implements. All right. So I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we graciously accept the donation from the Sandwich Garden Club to the Sandwich Public Schools, Forestale School, for $500. Second.
Motion by Ms. Benetta, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven to zero, with appreciation. Thank you very much. Next up is review and act on the regular business, let me try to, review and act on meeting minutes. First up is the regular business meeting dated June 25th, 2025.
I make a motion that we vote on, accept the business meeting minutes from June 25th, 2025. Sorry, I'm a little rusty.
Out of rhythm after having a summer off. Motion by Ms. Benetta, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes seven to zero. Next up is the workshop notes of July 29th, 2025.
Okay, I move that we accept the workshop notes from our summer workshop, July 29th, 2025, as presented. Second.
Hit the groove. Motion by Ms. Benetta, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Also seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next up is correspondence and announcements. I have none. Does anybody have anything? Seeing none? Moving on to the superintendent's update.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick updates. If you've had fortune or misfortune to be at Oak Ridge today or yesterday, not only is it torn up inside, now it's also torn up outside, but for good reasons. We got word within the last week, week and a half, the town is committing through its DPW department to completely repave the driveways, Bill Richard's Way at Forestale, and also the driveway that goes to Oak Ridge. If you have a child there or have been driving there recently, it's desperately needed with a lot of potholes and damages and so on. So I'm told the paving will begin at Oak Ridge tomorrow morning. If you're there now, all the pavement has been removed, it's been appropriately graded, and so on. So as soon as Oak Ridge is done, they will be going to Forestale with the target of early next week of having that work completed. So very, very pleased to report that, and grateful to the town and our DPW for taking that on.
Quick question? I know the announcement I saw, or maybe it was emailed to us, that there was still going to be access. You know, teachers that don't want to get in early to Forestale to set up their rooms, they're going to still be able to get in?
Yeah, no problem. As a matter of fact, there was a decent amount of teachers at Forestale today. Oak Ridge, however, is a little bit of a challenge. We are in the finishing stages of the HVAC project. We then also have some intense cleaning to do, but the game plan is to get the teachers in there in the ballpark of the 25th, 26th.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Seeing none. Back to you, sir.
And then, as I typically do during this meeting every year, per our policy on school choice, we do two announcements of what our school choice openings are. As I say in the background notes, if necessary, we do do a second lottery, which would occur a week from Monday on August 25th at 10:00 AM at Central Office. Right now, there are no openings at Forestale, however. At Oak Ridge, in grade four, there are two openings. In grade six, there is one opening. And at the middle high school, grade seven, there's eight openings. Grade eight, three openings. Grade nine, five openings. And grade 10, one opening. So that information will be posted to our website, and the application for school choice is there. And then the last item.
Dr. Miller, a question.
Let's refresh my memory. What conditions signal a second lottery? And are people from the initial pool included in that second lottery?
They are. But the conditions are, should, sometimes you get people who apply for school choice, and then they decline the opening, because maybe they've applied to different schools or something of that sort. And then last but not least, you have in your packet the last budget report of FY '25, as of June 30th. And I know Michelle is feverishly working on the end-of-the-year report, how exciting. But kind of wants to give an overview of how we closed out.
Okay, you have the June report in front of you. We came in with a surplus of $75,000. This $75,000 represents a purchase order from the Facility Department that wasn't expended. The items weren't purchased by June 30th, so we have to give the money back. I have spoken to Bill Jennings at Town Hall, and he is going to put an article on the fall town meeting so that we can get this money back, because it's needed for the flooring for Oak Ridge and Forestale. Other items in this final report, utility costs came in $109,409 over budget, which was anticipated, and most of that was at the high school. We used a total of $1,378,387 of circuit breaker funds to offset the budget. And salaries came in at $348,855 over budget, which was also anticipated. And this overage was a result of salary negotiation outcomes, as well as the need for quite a few leave replacements during this school year. Any questions?
Dr. Miller.
It's not a question, it's just a statement or a clarification on your part. So in addition to the $75,000 that was returned to the town, you were able to cover these overages within the operation budget.
Yes.
Significant and should be recognized.
I have a quick statement, too. What do we do better next year so we don't have this happen? The $75,000 be returned to the town? And now we have to go through town meeting again and have it transferred back?
Well, this was an unusual situation. Purchase order was created in the middle of June, but then turmoil in the Facilities Department, I guess the materials were just never ordered. When you don't order the materials, I can't roll the purchase order over.
No, I understand, but I'm thinking going forward with the Facilities Director.
You don't think it'll happen again?
Yeah. Check-ins with Communication.
Monday morning at 9:00 AM, check-ins?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It really shouldn't have happened last year.
Shouldn't have happened, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody other questions? Utilities, $100,000 over. Did we, I don't have, I have to pull out next year, you know, this, this year's budget now, because we're in it.
Sure.
Did we adjust for that, looking forward?
We did. We did a little bit for the FY '26 budget. But I think there's also a need to be looking at the operations up at the high school and see if there's any cost savings we could incur, because most of it was electric, and it wasn't even the gas usage. So.
You mean, turn it off the lights?
Turn it off lights, putting them on timers, things like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. That's moving on from the superintendent's update. Next up is the implementation of the new high school grade waiting system and handbook update. Just a little background, we talked about this previously. When we voted on this, the new GPA scale, in the spring, I went back and listened to both the video and reviewed the minutes. My motion was that it apply beginning in the '25, '26 school year. That was, don't hold me to it, but near verbatim what I said. Admittedly, my intent was, at least in my mind, that it would be retroactive, but that's not what I said. So we just need clarity on what our intent is. That's what, so if you saw the read ahead, there's the update to the handbook that lists kind of a blended system. So, but just to ensure clarity of intent of the school committee, we need to revote it here. So with that, I don't know if anybody has any comments.
Yeah. I think we discussed it during that meeting, too, about, you know, making it retroactive. When the school council met with the parents, the students, it was the understanding that it would be retroactive, and then we've kind of been back and forth. But I think the seamless, the easiest seamless way, the most equitable way, the fairest way, would be to make it retroactive for the classes of '26, '27, and '28. The thing is, it's never been published. We haven't been transparent with it, and I think going forth, we should. We should know that the weighing system hasn't been equitable with a college prep class and an AP class. Like, an A in a college prep class is worth more than an A minus in an honors class. That's really not fair. The curriculum is completely different. So I think these kids, we're always talking about student retention and academic rigor, and challenging our students and encouraging them to be the best that they can. And by not recognizing those, you know, upcoming sophomores, juniors, seniors, I think it's not very fair to them. And I really think we should make it retroactive for them going forward.
Anyone else? Tracy.
Can you share more about the discussion with parents and students and staff around having it be retroactive? And just share some of what those conversations looked like?
I attended a school council meeting where this came up, and as a little background, this first originated when we updated the graduation criteria in the handbook, when the MCAS requirement went away.
And we had those conversations around CD, competency determination.
And in the handbook, this was the next section, and it just piqued my interest because it talked about a waiting system of, and it was, you know, CP was worth one, honors was 1.06, AP was 1.12. And I didn't know what that really looked like, so I asked for the table that you see in the handbook now. To be honest with you, I was not aware, like, an A plus was worth more than an A. Back in my day, when, you know, I had a little gray hair than a lot of people. Everything was, you know, an A was 4.0, no matter what shade of A it was, so to speak. So that's when it caught my attention, that, as Danielle mentioned, you know, a half-letter grade higher in a lower-level course is actually worth more when you do the calculations, which seems a bit incongruent. So that's how this whole started, when I, and so I kind of tossed it back to Ms. Nelson, and I went to the school council. The kids were pretty adamant that, they felt that there was a, there was a miscompare, they weren't, we've never published this previous scale. And, you know, just my recollection of that meeting is they wanted it, you know, if we fixed it, they all wanted it retroactive, in summary. But kind of like, if we feel like there's an inconsistency here, I don't know why we would want to maintain that inconsistency for the next three years in this hybrid form, rather than just.
And discredit all of their hard work that they've put in. And by changing our waiting system, we will be aligned with the state standards. So for the state colleges and universities, when we, right now, when our students apply to state colleges, they have to recalculate everything. So why not just do it right the first time, so there doesn't have to be that recalculation?
Dr. Miller.
At the end of the day, these are just numbers. I know they're important numbers, but they're numbers. And so from my perspective, aligning with the UMass system makes good sense because colleges and universities recalculate anyway, recalculate GPAs based on that system. What I'm more interested in is how our faculty are working to do really authentic assessment of student learning. So regardless, we all know that there's a certain amount of grade inflation that is rampant at all levels of education. So the real work, I think, becomes the teachers in creating assessments that truly measure what students are able to demonstrate and do and skill. And I think that gets to the meat of our strategic plan that we'll be talking about in a little bit.
Ms. Adams.
Yeah, just to piggyback a little bit off that, to the extent that these are, you know, just numbers, albeit important numbers, I do think that we're coming into a line with the state standards, with the state colleges. It makes the most sense to have a universal standard across all the grade levels. I think that no matter when we do this, understandably, it's going to be a little bit messy. But if we're going to make, if we're going to have to rip this band-aid off at some point, it makes the most sense to just have the school under the exact same standard. Not to mention, you do have certain situations, albeit rare, where you have students of different grade levels taking the same class. I think there's something inherently sort of strange about two students in art honors receiving different grade points purely based on, you know, when they, that wouldn't happen.
No. What is being proposed is the GPA and the waitings would go into effect for all students starting this school year.
Got it, but it wouldn't be retroactive to work done in previous years? Is that what I'm understanding?
No. I do not recommend any retroactive application. And I don't recommend a retroactive application for this simple reason. A, I think it's problematic to change the set of rules after the fact for things that have already happened. The second piece is we, if you recall from the meeting on June 25th, we did, one of the things that I said was to model it for the class of '26, the rising seniors. We did model it. And it turns out 89% of students in that class will have their class rank changed by a retroactive application. I think that's highly problematic, and I think that would create a considerable amount of consternation and issues, starting with the high school administration. So this is a policy decision, obviously, it's your choice. I'm just putting out there, for, I think, those critical reasons, I would not advise it.
But to be clear, the grading system, the grade point average would be universal for any work done this year?
Correct.
Ms. Goodwin.
So just to bring more clarity, so we're talking about conversations with students and families sounding like retroactive was important, and we're hearing from more of an administrative perspective that that would be problematic. So where's the?
I think a fairly large amount of our families at the high school are not cognizant of this conversation unless they pay attention to what's happening at the school committee level, or they read the piece that Taylor ever-so-expertly wrote in the Enterprise. I just worry about, I know if I am the father of a rising senior, I think a fairly large amount of these students know exactly what their class rank is. Realize if you retroactively apply this new waiting system, it's going to change. And again, 89% of the students will have a change. Some will go up, but there's others that will go down. I think that there's considerable issues, particularly for students who will have their rank go down, and think about where these kids are as far as the college application. these kids are as far as the college application process. It's going to start ramping up, particularly for early decision, and so on. So I've got concerns in that sense. And again, it's more than just the issue of this will create additional work and, and so on. My concern, as I said from the get-go, is I think it, people who would counter with, well, you're kind of changing the rules of the road and my child, you know, with my consultation, made decisions on coursework based upon what the rules were at the time. So again, this is obviously in your parameter as a policy. I completely understand and respect Kevin and Danielle's perspective. I am just saying, I don't think it's advisable to make this retroactive application.
Likewise, I, I understand the challenge and I appreciate the perspective. I'm not sure so much people are picking courses based on this because the table that's now in the handbook has never been published before. I never saw it until last January, sorry for that. So I don't know if we've been completely transparent with it. And because when I saw it, I was kind of surprised. I think some parents might be surprised to find out, like I said earlier, you know, a B plus in a, in a college prep is worth more than a B in an AP. Is that balanced? So there's easily two, two perspectives and I understand and respect both.
Yeah, like I agree with Kevin. It's never been transparent until he started peeling back the onion and then said, whoa, and brought this up, maybe it was a year ago, last fall, I think it was, that we started talking about this, maybe?
Last January.
Last January. But we will see a rise in GPAs, right? Dr. Maruzcheck? There'll be a significant increase in GPAs?
The modeling did show a rise in GPA for most students. However, there were some students that showed a decline. And again, the, the little, little working group that connected on July 8th kind of looked at all 140 kids ranked, you know, no names, no identification. But again, I've got concerns about students who dropped. Okay, so I will tell you, there is one student that dropped over 20 places in their class rank. And to be fair, there was one student who gained 20 places. Most of them were in the ballpark of like one to four. Okay, but again, I worry about changing the rules midstream. I think that that is a source of major concern.
Quick question?
Yeah.
I know there's a large percentage that changed. Given if one person changes, it means two people change. So that would kind of.
Correct.
Skews the number a little bit. Do we have any idea what percentage change there was just year over year? Like from, say, the sophomore class, you know, last year's sophomore class to this year, or last year's junior class, I guess last year's sophomore to now this year's, you know, just?
Sure.
And junior.
Yeah, we'd have to model that.
There's probably significant change there on a year, year over year.
Not as dramatic as a retroactive modeling. The biggest change, believe it or not, happens with your top 40 or so because as kids progress in taking AP courses, particularly the AP courses where they get the largest boost, that's where you see amongst the top 40, the greatest shuffling. But realize, again, in modeling this with the retroactive application, you had shuffling across all 140 students.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, so when transcripts are sent off to the various colleges, that scale is shown, but realize, I think this came up in discussion overwhelmingly, schools kind of recalculated themselves with whatever their own scale is.
Anyone else? Okay. Either way, I need a motion to provide clarity.
I'll make a motion that we, we approve the new high school grade weighting system in handbook with the addition of the retroactive portion for the great, the classes of 2026, 2027, and 2028.
Motion by Ms. Benand, a second by Mr. Fisher. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes, retroactive.
She's saying. Do you want to clarify your motion?
I would say we would accept the new high school grade weighting system with the addition of adding the retroactive piece.
So the handbook would remove the, the old system and it would just go with the new system?
With, retroactively with the new weighting system. And are we publishing the weighting of each?
It should be, yeah, that's. If you look at the handbook, proposed handbook change includes both. So this, her recommendation, if, if approved, would remove the old weighting system and just include the new system.
So if a student's graduate in 26, that you're supposing that their entire transcript be recalculated on the new weighting, is that what you're saying?
So it's consistent throughout?
Consistent, yeah. Yeah, ninth graders will start fresh. Yeah.
So we do have a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Benand, a second by Mr. Fisher. Any further discussion, any further questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes for three. Okay, next up is new business, presentation of learning and leading and learning SPS strategic plan 25 to 2030.
Okay, this is, I'm not going to go into all of the detail that we went in two weeks ago during the, during the workshop that we had on July 29th.
I've got a question. Since we did go into it two weeks ago, and since it was a public meeting, why are we going into it again today?
I figured for a public presentation, and we talked about during that meeting on the 29th of just kind of putting this out there as almost kind of a first reading, Bert, and a vote to be taken on it two weeks from tonight on the 27th.
But the, the enterprise was there that day, and they, you did an article, correct? So it seems like you're just going over something we already did. You know, I know you're going to do it anyway, but I just making the comment.
When we built the agenda, Superintendent, I spoke about it, we, and actually we mentioned this at the workshop that we would kind of.
You did, that's.
Make some change, you know, kind of do a quick refresh because this is also being recorded on Sandwich Community Television where our workshop was not. So it allows it to get a little bit broader viewpoint. And plus, we, there's probably been some, at least, you know, happy, glad changes to it since.
Just minor ones.
So this is kind of essentially the first reading. The goal is at our next meeting, right before the start of the school year, we would do a formal vote to approve this.
And I would offer that one of our major tenants of this strategic plan is communication. We heard during public forum, the importance of accessibility in all communication.
Yeah, and, and to, you know, I'm in complete agreement with the, the points that were made. And one of the strategic initiatives that we will be adding to this is around digital accessibility of all of our communications, completely in agreement with it. So very concisely, leading and learning is the title of our brand new strategic plan that we're really excited about. We used a process called Planning for Success, which the state has had in existence for about 10 years. It's kind of a template, so to speak, to build either three or five-year district strategic plans. And really, it's, it's a three-part process. It is first creating the plan by envisioning what you'd like to see for the future for the district. Also, with a backward type, type of design based upon an analysis of how the district is doing. But being very, very explicit that the intent is to align these plans with the district plan, with school improvement plans, and also individual educator evaluation goals. And then, you know, I, I feel like we do a very good job with the actual implementation of annual action plans. So the actual elements of the plan, mission, vision, core values, analysis of what is being said about our current performance, what are the big rocks or strategic objectives? And then under each of them, those big rocks are overarching goals, what are the initiatives? What are the measurable outcomes or the SMART goals? And then from that comes annual district action plans as we discuss every year in September. So you see here from our strategic planning committee, we did have a committee of, I believe the final number was 37, teachers, administrators, students, parents, community members. We had a subcommittee that came up with these core values. I intentionally capitalized some of the, the key phrases that I think come up time and again as far as the key concepts, you know, are, all members are connected, there's a sense of belonging, lifelong learning, learning being meaningful, joyful, and student-centered. We have high expectations in all of our students. We believe in them. There's proactive support. There's strong school, family, community partnerships. Our curriculum is relevant, purposeful, and connected to the world. And then there is equitable access to opportunities, resources, and facilities that embody Blue Knight pride. So we did redo, and I know back on the 29th, we had a conversation about a reworked mission and vision statement. So again, we were looking to have something much more concise, much more easy to remember. So mission, learners today, leaders tomorrow, thinking about kind of the journey pre-K through 12, knowing cogni, being cognizant that leadership takes many, many different forms across different contexts. And then our vision statement, really the key is those three words, belong, grow, lead, and then building on a legacy of purpose and possibility. And as we talked about on the 29th, kind of talking about a lot of the pride and hence that word legacy of how many people in our community, you know, it's generational that they've lived here in town and they've been a product. And there's a lot of pride in being a product of the Sandwich Public Schools. As far as our overarching goals or our big rocks, the strategic objectives, it's fourfold. One, teaching and learning, that kind of encompasses everything that we do with regard to a standards-based curriculum and providing high-quality instruction to all students. Two, supports for all students and kind of talking about what type of multi-tiered system of support do we have in place to meet kids where they are academically, behaviorally, and socially, emotionally? The third overarching goal is around climate and culture in school and community. Develop and implement a plan that instills a sense of belonging and pride in Sandwich throughout the district. And then four, really kind of speaks to the ongoing work with facilities and capital planning. Develop and implement a plan that instills a sense of belonging and pride in Sandwich throughout the district and community. So I'm not going to get into all of the specifics, but each of the strategic objectives or the overarching goals is supported by specific strategic initiatives that the vision would be, these are going to take multiple years to achieve. It may not be one year, it may not be five years, it might be two or three, but specific pieces where the data says we need to work on these pieces. So strategic, and also the plan does have specific outcomes or again, part of that envisioning of the future. By the conclusion of this five-year strategic plan, what are our expected outcomes specifically to know that we've been successful in this strategic plan? So then the initiatives for supports for all students, again, you see explicitly ensuring that we have an MTSS process at all schools, that we're very, very explicit with what specially designed instruction is. Again, the anti-bullying piece of promoting an upstander culture, and so on. Again, the outcomes for strategic objective two. Strategic objective three around climate and culture, school and community. You see the initiatives there around creating inclusive school cultures. As we talked about two weeks ago, ensuring that the transitions between our schools are smooth. Constantly having celebrations showcasing, showcasing student academic, artistic, and athletic projects, and so on. Then the outcomes. And then last but not least, facilities and capital planning, really about annually updating what are our capital needs, communicating them effectively as far as what the costs are for these capital projects, but then coming up with a specific plan of how they would actually be funded and implemented. And again, the specific outcomes around our facilities, our five-year capital plan, and then funding to address longstanding capital needs. So again, I, I believe I talked about this as well, kind of embedded within all of these plans are really what we're referring to as our essential elements as far as the environment, the culture, the types of practices that we want to see embedded in all of our plans, you know, the non-negotiables around what is, what type of learning culture, what type of agency, how kids are using technology, what type of work do students produce? Is it authentic? Is it tied to the real world? The whole, I think what Dr. Miller was talking about before, as far as our assessment practices, how meaningful are they? What's the quality of feedback and reflection? And then really the piece around flexible and learning environments that we are using time and physical space and virtual space to meet kids where they are. So I know that that was probably a wicked, wicked quick slosh through the process. And again, to Bert's point, I think we kind of went through it a little more methodically two weeks ago. But it would be my intent to, through Parent Square, by the conclusion of this week, to send this draft out to our families to act for reaction. I can tell you with a high degree of confidence, I did create this document on Canva and all things like Leslie was referring to, like alt text are embedded within it. So I have a high degree of confidence that this is a digitally accessible document.
Thank you. Questions?
Very good, Bert. Very hip, grandpa.
Any other, any other questions on it? So the, we will, this will be on the agenda at the next meeting. So we will, this will be on the agenda at the next meeting, after any feedback we get from the community, after the superintendent publishes it, and at the next meeting, it will be on for a vote to formally approve this as our strategic plan going forward. That work for everybody? Okay. Next up, oh, the favorite, Confirming Attendance Numbers for the Mass Joint Conference, November 12th and 14th, and I don't know if we have to pick our delegate right now, or if you want that?
I don't think it's really necessary at this point. I mean, we still have, what, about three months, give or take? So I just think, as I put in the background notes, I think the date is something like September 5th. You still get the early bird registration thing, and you save about $125 on a registration fee. So if you are interested in going, and we usually, we typically get at least three-ish folks go, please let Lisa know, and she'll be more than happy to register you.
And registering to go does not require you to go to every single thing over all three days, but if you can make some of the events, it's certainly, it's a learning opportunity on different things. So please get to Lisa on that. I will take the opportunity. Do we have anybody who's interested in being our delegate this year? Okay, I didn't think, I had to try. We'll deal with that a little bit closer to the fall. And just so you know, Alexis, one of the things that happens is they will eventually come out with a number of resolutions?
Resolutions.
They call them?
They're called resolutions.
Yep.
And we will pick a delegate to be the Sandwich rep to this meeting. Anybody can go, but we have one voting delegate. We will then, as ourselves, make a vote of the intent of the committee on the various resolutions that come out, and then that person, the expectation is that person who's our delegate will vote as, you know, on our behalf as we voted for the various things. Hopefully, that made sense, the way I explained it. If somebody can explain it better, please do so. Okay. Seeing none. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair? I have none. Subcommittee reports. I don't think anybody's met over the summer, so that's that. That said, it's, tis the season as we start ramping up in September, so if your various subcommittees have things, I know Policy has some things to clean up. So I'd ask that the chairs look at that, start planning, get things on schedules. I know lots of times, the idea is to hold it before this meeting. So we just want to get aligned so we don't double-book. I guess, other things, new business not reasonably anticipated by the chair, as an alibi. There's eventually going to be some work done in this room, where this room is not going to become available. So Superintendent is working to get video connectivity in the library?
Library Media Center at the high school.
So we could, I'm sorry.
Yeah. One of the things that was posed to us is to do, kind of the path of least resistance, is to do our meetings at the Sand Hill School. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, I think the Select Board is going to move your meetings there when the construction's being done, correct? Yeah. Part of the problem is, though, some of the other committees in town meet on Wednesdays, so
I don't think we have SCTV broadcasts.
Yeah, I think one of the key concerns, Bert, is to be able to livestream it. So, yes, the short answer. I think we can, in pretty short order, have some remote acting cameras set up in the Library Media Center, and then I could have, you know, Bryce Harper work with Paula to ensure, you know, we could still continue livestream and record the meeting. So we should know within the next week or two.
Do we know how long this project is going to take here?
What I've just heard from Heather is fall.
The important part is, you know, there's actually limited meeting space that has connectivity, you know, our, the Superintendent and I discussion was that keeping Wednesday 6:00 was paramount, because that's where you all build your schedules around and things like that. I certainly do. So we wanted to keep that, and we don't necessarily want to be the bully that pushes another committee out of Sand Hill. So as long as we have video connectivity, ability to livestream, so those people that can't make it or want to watch at home, or want to watch it after the fact, can certainly do so. That was kind of the priority. So more to follow on that, just wanted to make you aware of it. So I apologize for the alibi there. Next up is warrants.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented tonight, and they're all signed. Second.
Motion by Ms. Benettas, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any further discussion, or any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Extention, pass 7-0. Next up is our second public comment of the evening. Would anybody like to come forward to speak a public comment? Seeing none. Future agenda items, I think that's when you were going to mention the video, so I got ahead of myself. I apologize. Anything, anybody like to put? Sue knows what I'm about to say, so I'll let her just tell me what she wants to do.
Future agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
This may be ambitious, but I think we need to start hearing about it. We spoke a great deal during our various strategic planning about AI, the importance of AI, the importance of preparing our students at various levels to use AI. You can't pick up a piece of media now without some use of AI or some discussion about AI. So I would like the Superintendent with the building administrators to figure out a way to start an inventory of how, what, where, and how, you know, kind of the monitoring of the use of that, and how, where. And I'm asking this in the most positive of light. I am not of the camp that, you know, is, it's cheating. This is, this is here. We need to be able to, in all of its various presence and future, prepare our students for the world, and our teachers for the world, and staff. So I'm not sure how you would do that. I'm not sure when it would be feasible to have something like that done, but I would think maybe by the end of the year, that there could be some inventory presentation, something, even if it was incorporated into the spring showcase, something for us to kind of get, begin to get a handle about where we are and where we would like to go with this across the curriculum. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Goodwin?
I don't know if this fits when in the agenda we talk about the course of studies. I'm not sure when we do that.
Usually, the committee approves the program of studies usually in about February, March.
Okay. I was taking a look at it based on this idea of GPA and changing and AP, and I'd love to learn more about the language that's in there about meeting teacher recommendations for honors, AP, and it does say that a parent or a student can advocate for themselves.
Sure.
It also kind of says the opposite in there as well. And based on Sue's point about assessments, I'd like to spend some time hearing about how more students taking CP classes who might not understand that they can handle more or have opportunities to handle more. I'd like to see
And, not to completely unzip this, but I have a really, really high degree of confidence that the AP courses, for all intents and purposes, are open enrollment. I, and this is really fresh in my mind, because the first thing this morning, I was crunching our spring 25 AP results. We hit, again, another all-time high as far as the enrollment. We had 380 AP tests this year. So we, last year, we did extremely well, and we had 363. So again, not a huge difference, but it's 17, while the high school enrollment went down by 20 kids. So, you know, the sense that I get, you know, Jeannie and I have had many conversations, but I've had conversations with staff, I think the operational construct is kids are encouraged and nobody is discouraged from accessing that coursework. But to your point about the language that's in the program of studies, I think that's a good point, and it merits discussion.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. Acknowledgements, closing remarks? Anyone? Okay. I have none. We're back at it again. We're at every two weeks going forward. We have one more before the start of the school year. Next meeting will be the 27th. Convocation is that morning at 9?
No, 8.
8.
Well, 8 for refreshments, 8:30. To listen to the Superintendent.
It's a great event, if anybody
Forget the chair for two minutes. So if you can make that, it's, while not as cool as graduation, it is kind of a cool event to start the school year, if your schedule allows, I'd encourage you to attend. So with that, I have nothing more. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I think we'll still be here.
We'll still
We'll let you know if we move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Goodwin. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Extentions, pass 7-0 at 7:01.